I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna ask Keisha Fields to come up, but first, I want to recognize her because she was very instrumental last week. The Des Moines Partnership recognized Polk County as the winner of the 22 Inclusion Award in a public entity, which is the first time anybody had received an award like that. And she was certainly instrumental in making that happen for developing a more diverse, inclusive, and equitable workplace. So without her, this would have never happened. So we want to certainly recognize and thank her for all her efforts. She's brought a lot of initiatives in the workplace. The welcoming week was one that stands out to me that was really... We didn't have the best weather, I don't believe, that day, but it was a fun day. So, Keisha, thank you for all your efforts that you've brought to Polk County.
Thank you. So I'm Keisha Fields, Diversity Inclusion and Organizational Development Specialist. I am a black omelet curly hair, wearing a burgundy cardigan and a black turtleneck. So first, I want to thank the Greater Des Moines Partnership and the Inclusion Council for recognizing Polk County and our DEI journey. We are just getting started, and I'm excited for what we have to come in the future. I'm representing countless people. I know Angela said that, you know, I've been instrumental. It's been a whole tribe of people that has been instrumental in this DEI journey. And I like to say that, you know, always let people know that our motto is "Leading the Way." And the Polk County Board of Supervisors have been very intentional about us leading the way in DEI initiatives, and I like to thank them. Thank you all for supporting me and our continuous efforts towards DEI. And our DEIA Committee, Diversity Equity Inclusion Accessibility Committee, they didn't know I was coming here, or else they would've showed out. But thank them for being a part of this journey with me, because without them, I would've lost my mind. But, you know, and also to the leaders in here and who are throughout the county that have also been making sure that we stay on this DEI journey. So I thank them, and again, thank the whole tribe of Polk County for being instrumental and intentional about this DEI journey that we're on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Keisha. Okay. Anybody else want to make public comments? Okay, see none? Oh, okay, sorry.
My name's Alan Richards, and I was... Received quite a few votes in the last election countywide in Polk County. And I know that hasn't happened for a long time, that anybody was able to stand up on the Republican side countywide. Do I agree with the results are accurate? The answer to that would be yes and no. Do I agree that the government will continue to finalize the votes as they occurred? I will say they will. But in terms of social influence in anatomy of an election, in social psychology of the Democratic Party, to name a building that is basically a courthouse and you call it the Democratic Party Justice Center just before an election is part of that psychological influence of an election. And I do understand going way back, the control of the Democratic Party in Polk County. And there's ways of doing that, and you've done it. Fortunately, I've studied widely, and I was able to study at the Library of London in a special room where Karl Marx wrote his manifesto. And one of the theories of maintaining party control is putting out statues and naming everything after your party to let it be known that this party is gonna control no matter what. Now, I won't discount billionaires putting money into Iowa to try to retain control. I won't disagree with the fact that people's arms will be twisted to vote a certain way, and they do that. And it just doesn't seem fair to me, just not at all. And I understand the stranglehold that the Democratic Party has in Polk County, but there is an alternative view. And I will push that alternative view for the better of all people. And I will come back when I have some more time and talk about the 988 system, which I spoke here before, because the future's on the horizon here. And there's things that can be done. Even though it's gonna be controlled with an iron grip by one party, there is an alternative view out there. And that alternative view is a winner, and I will push for that.
Thank you. Okay, petitions?
Petition to... Number nine, petition to suspend taxes and special assessments for property at 1235 71st Street, Windsor Heights.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes. Move on to resolutions.
Number 10, resolution approving MHID DV service approvals and authorizing expenditures from the MHDS Services Fund.
Resolution?
Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 11, resolution approving the integrated home health and service coordination value-based incentive payments. Number 12, resolution approving the allocation of value-based incentive payments to community living service providers. Resolution approving submission to Iowa Department of Health and Human Services, Polk County Mental Health and Disability Services Region, fiscal year 2122 accrual and balance certification statement.
Resolutions?
Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 14, resolution suspending taxes and special assessments and authorizing chairperson to sign the application and affidavit for redemption of parcel for 1217 East Jefferson.
I'll move it. Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 15 and 16 are resolutions approving acquisition through condemnation of permanent and temporary easements for the construction of the Northeast Broadway Avenue Improvements Project.
I'll move it. Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 17, resolution approving professional services agreement with ISG Incorporated. Number 18, resolution approving preliminary plat of Maxwell Estates Plat 1. Number 19 and 20 are resolutions approving final plats of Forest Ridge Estates Plat 1 and Flick Estates. Number 21, resolution approving water main connection agreement for property at 6456 Southeast 55th Street. Number 22, resolution approving agreement with Iowa DOT for the design and construction of the Highway 141, Highway 415, Northwest 121st Street Improvement Project. Number 23, resolution authorizing the Auditor's Office to publish notice of public hearing for December 13, 2022 regarding certification of fiscal year 2223 Curbit Assessments.
I'll move the resolutions collectively, Madam Chair, but I've got a question.
I do too. Can I have one comment myself?
Hey, we all got questions. Bob, you better get ready. Okay, Tom?
Was it seconded? Somebody seconded?
Yes, he did.
Yeah, second, okay. Bob, just really quickly, and I've read the resolution on the Foamark Water Shed and the consultant. Just, can you just summarize briefly what they're gonna... Services they're gonna provide for?
Right, Bob Rice, Public Works Director. Yeah, so ISG, we're trying to spread the wealth as far as consultants and things, and we had a... This is a tributary to Four Mile up by Ankeny, and there's been some people... There's like three or four older detention basins or ponds up there, and what we're trying to do is upgrade, maybe see if there's some possibility of upgrading those to hold some more water and to possibly work better for water quality.
Okay, all right. It's 13,000 bucks or something like that, I read.
That's correct. So what we'll do... That comes out of our line item for that, and then what John will do, our water quality person will then look for some other funding to possibly build those once we have a plan in place.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
With respect to number 22, which is the resolution having to do with the design of 141, 121st, and so forth, you might, for the benefit of the board and the public, kind of summarize what's going on there.
Sure. So as the resolution stated, we did a study initiated by the DOT. There's a fairly dangerous intersection on Highway 141 connecting to Northwest 121st Street that goes up to Conservation Jester Park area. That's high speed, that's continuing more and more traffic over the years, and there's been a lot of accidents there. So we did a study with them and the city of Johnston, who's annexed North and Grimes that way. And what it was determined is, we need to close 121st Street. And basically, the DOT drives that. To close 121st Street right by this curve, we're going to build another... Basically, a new road, 110th Street off 415, which is basically the road that goes up to the Mile Long Bridge. This'll be safer. It'll add more access to the local population up there. And our portion that's going to be in the county of 110th Street, this connection, was what will be funded here through the agreement with the DOT. Johnston has some property as well. They will pay a significant portion, and then the DOT picks up a lion's share of it.
Just so people know what we're talking about, 121st Street is the street you take to get to Jester Park Golf Course, the Park City Center, and all that. So it's really highly used road.
Correct.
And also, we did try to suggest the idea of traffic signals there, and that was met with not a lot of enthusiasm by DOT, but so they're gonna move on. This is their road, they can do what they want, but they're gonna move on with what their plan is, right?
Correct. So, you know, they get the ultimate say. It's their road. If they want to block off access to our road, they can simply just do that. So we try to partner with them for the best solution. The signals don't work very well because the connection of Highway 415, which is a Mile Long Bridge road, is right near there to the east. And so you would be accelerating, basically, if somebody's coming off 415 to go towards Perry, you would be accelerating into a possible stop condition, and that's not a good situation. So 121st is actually too close to that interchange to really be safe and work. So that's not gonna work. That's everybody's first solution, is to put up signals to slow them down. Highway 415... Highway 141 north of Grimes is extremely busy, and the traffic counts are almost more than 163 at this point on the south side of Des Moines Metro. So signals just weren't a good solution.
Has traffic study done years ago?
It started in 2012. We started paying attention to stuff, and we started getting some real significant accidents, but the study itself was a couple of years ago.
So what's our cost?
Our cost is about 1.6, I believe, and we'll pay that through... The DOT will run the program and run the contract, and we pay that through our account up at the DOT.
But we'll pay 1.7 million?
1.6, because that's what our stretch of the road... We're gonna have a road built for us in our jurisdiction, because they're gonna be basically chopping off our connection at 121st. So they're gonna build another new road. We'll share that. Some of it'll be in Johnston, some of it'll be in rural Polk County, and we'll share... We'll pay for our cost of the road, but the DOT, again, will take up a lion's share of this construction cost.
How is it budgeted for, John? Do you know? How is it budgeted for?
Where are you getting the money?
This'll go through our five-year program, so it'll be foreign market secondary road funding. This is a normal process that we do with DOT on agreements for this kind of funding. It'll go into our next five-year plan with the DOT.
Okay. Great.
These accidents on 121st Street tend to be pretty high-speed, which tends to... I mean, there's a number of them. The amount of severe injuries that occur are pretty high. So something needs to be done. I agree with DOT on that completely.
Correct. I mean, it's 65 there, and you have... You still have farm utility vehicles trying to cross there and things at a low speed. The DOT has tried some different kind of turning solutions and some flashing lights and things like that, but it's... It isn't doing the trick.
Right.
I take it all the parties out there know what's happening?
Yeah, we're going to have another meeting, I believe, in December or January. Most of them agreeing, want something done. They've written the DOT, and they've talked to us. There's a farmer or two that is unhappy with it, just thinks that signals don't work, but that tends to be normal in this kind of project.
Got it.
I would say it's not unanimous, that's for sure.
I bet not. I'm glad it's your area. Okay, thanks, Bob.
You bet.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 24, 25, and 26 are resolutions reclassifying positions within Community, Family, and Youth Services, Public Works Departments, and Sheriff's Office.
I'll move the resolutions. Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 27, resolution approving agreement with Iowa Department of Justice for extension of the Polk County Victim and Witness Coordinator Program. Number 28, resolution approving engagement of Allers Cooney PC. Number 29, resolution authorizing settlement of a worker's compensation claim.
Move the resolutions collectively.
I'd like to have a separate vote on 28, please.
I'll second the... There's a motion, and I agree with that also.
Okay, so right now, we have a second on 27 and...
29.
29. Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
On 27 and 29, I vote yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes. Okay, somebody needs to move 28.
Move 28. Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
No.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Epstein.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 30, resolution authorizing the Auditor's Office to publish county revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for year ended June 30, 2022.
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 31, resolution supporting the placement of signage dedicating the bridge over Beaver Creek Interstate... Over Beaver Creek Interstate 35, Interstate 80, as the Richard G. Lewer Memorial Bridge.
I'll move a resolution. Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Just a comment on that. This Richard Lewer is the... The American Legion Post is named after him. He's a local Johnston guy. The Johnston American Legion Post is named after him, and he was killed in action in Vietnam in 1967. So this is a nice honor for him and his family, and I appreciate the board's support.
Okay.
Number 32, resolution approving various sponsorships.
Move resolution.
Somebody... Okay. Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 33, resolution appointing individuals to various boards and commissions.
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend this resolution. One, I think we had Kurt Bailey going on to... Our former county engineer going on to both planning and zoning and Board of Adjustment Adjustment, and we were informed, I think, that you can't serve on both. I think Brett Vanlon said you can't serve on both. So they'd asked that Kurt be appointed to a Board of Adjustment and not planning and zoning. So I'd like to make that amendment, as well as Ken Sager was supposed to be on the list today to be appointed to the Prairie Meadows Board, and it was accidentally omitted and didn't get on the agenda. So I'd like to amend it to include Ken Sager on the... For the Prairie Meadows appointment.
I'll second.
In addition to, or...
In addition to.
Okay.
So we're taking Kurt off the zoning commission, 'cause he can only be on Board of Adjustment, and adding Ken Sager.
Just one board.
He can only be on one board. He really wanted to be on two, apparently. Okay.
And whose appointment is Mr. Sager's?
Board appointment, like the rest of them.
Okay. I'd like to have some discussion around what a board appointment means, because I was surprised to see Mr. Miles' name on the agenda today as a board appointment. Once again, in the absence of information, the only thing I can do is rely on whatever comes out in the press or notifications of our board meetings. I think that these appointments are pretty significant appointments, and I think they should be done in the light of day with discussion of the full board. Every board member here represents a constituency that has a responsibility to have input into these appointments. So I think, bare minimum, we need to be doing this. And secondly, this is a very controversial appointment, because Mr. Miles has assorted history with Prairie Meadows and his interactions with Prairie Meadows Board. He's known to bypass the grants process and arrange for funding of pet projects without consideration of existing rules. He used Prairie Meadows grants and funds to support Catholic schools and other projects within his district without regard to religious organizations. He used Prairie Meadows funds to pay parking lots at Christ the King Church. He accepted funds from a fundraiser held by principals of Prairie Meadows Racetrack and Casino, in which Gary Palmer was a sponsor. His actions were reviewed and quite controversial in his election, his last election as supervisor, where 70% of the public that he represented rejected him. This is, to me, clearly a move to enshrine cronyism in Polk County government. The nomination of John Miles, rejection of good government and best practices, and yet another return to the good old boys' form of government that seems to be deeply rooted in this Polk County Board of Supervisors. This board has been complacent in every action taken by Mr. Miles, and his action... And this action today further enables him to continue to abuse the system with this appointment. Furthermore, today, we celebrated our diversity, inclusion, and equity in the community, and yet, when I look at the Prairie Meadows Board, it is 15 of the most well-fixed senior members of this community. It is not representative of any of the black and brown community, and there's certainly nobody in this board that I would consider on the lower end of the economic spectrum. And yet, this is the board that is the nonprofit for the organization that is supposed to be providing a balance for what the community needs are with this nonprofit. I think we need to look at all of this. I've been unhappy for a long time about the way the Prairie Meadows Board has been operating and the close quarters that it keeps, and the decisions that are made in private, the fundraising that has gone on out there, the political affiliations that have been created around it, and just the... What I consider some of the poisonous things that are happening to maintain a nonprofit license in Polk County. And so I think it's time we look at everything related to Prairie Meadows and have a deeper and more thoughtful consideration as it relates to what the community needs are going forward. So with that, I will be a no vote on this. Kurt Bailey, I support you for your zoning board, but I'm going to be a no on this nomination of John Miles, and I would certainly have supported Ken Sager, representing labor, for the purposes of this. And I'd like to have a separate vote on Ken Sager, please.
Angela, I had a couple of comments, if I might. I typically voted against these Prairie Meadows appointments pretty consistently, not all of them, but most of them, because of the process that's been involved, which has been basically not bipartisan in the least, let's put it that way. It's been very partisan, and the Republicans haven't had an appointment since I've been on the board. That's okay. I mean, I get that. We're in a minority, and there's nothing illegal or unethical about that. It's not lost on me that I'm in the minority, so they can do what they want. However, it just didn't seem very bipartisan for me. Now, since then, this... Since this particular nomination came up, I've had good discussions with my colleagues, and I've been assured that they will be more bipartisan in the future, which I accept, and I think that's great. It's a good step, I think, for us. So I don't think John's a bad appointment. I think he'd do a good job if he gets appointed. But my opposition to previous appointments have been based basically on the process. If the process gets cleaned up, then I'm certainly happy to afford my vote to Prairie Meadows appointments. Thanks.
Okay. All right, so we have an amendment offered. Does anybody want to support the amendment? Otherwise, I'm moving forward.
It was moved and seconded, Madam Chair. My amendment.
All right. Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
No.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
No.
Conley?
Yes. Okay.
Now we have the actual...
Pardon me?
Now we have the actual appointment, right? That was just the amendment.
I don't believe there was a second on the amendment, so you were actually voting on the... As it stands, on the agenda. There was a motion for an amendment. There was no second on the motion.
Steve has seconded it.
Steve seconded the amendment.
He seconded it.
Yeah.
The motion?
I guess I'm...
His amendment. Tom's amendment passed.
So now the amendment's...
To amend Kurt Bailey and to add Ken Sager.
So that's where we... I stand corrected. I thought we were talking about Supervisor McCoy's motion.
No.
No, my amendment was moved and seconded.
So now the actual...
Resolution.
Resolution needs to be voted on.
Yeah.
I'll move the resolution as amended.
Thank you.
And I will second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
No.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes. Okay, I'm glad we got through that.
Number 34, resolution approving first amended community development agreement with Dorothy's House.
Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 35, resolution approving community development grant for Urban Dreams.
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Number 35... I'm sorry, 36, resolution approving community betterment grant awards.
Move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes. We do have Resolution 36A.
Move 36A. Second.
What exactly are we moving?
The Polk County Housing Trust Fund that we talked about for the 12... It was originally 15. Now it's $12 million, so they can consider the $3 million for a revolving fund that will be ongoing on their projects.
Thank you.
I have the same question, Matt. Apparently, it just codifies what we...
Yeah, what we did to...
Yep. Roll call. Yeah, we gotta move in a second.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes. Communications.
Number 37, request for abatement of taxes for 603rd Street Southwest in Altoona.
Refer to the treasurer, assessor, and county attorney.
Number 38, City Pleasant Hill Notice of Public Hearing on Annexation Moratorium in 28 E... Number 38, City Pleasant Hill Notice of Public Hearing on Annexation Moratorium and 28E Agreement with City of Des Moines. Number 39, Notice of Reproposed Annexation of Unincorporated Territory into the City of Altoona. Number 40, City of Ankeny Notice of Public Hearing on Voluntary Annexation of Certain Territory Adjacent to the Northeast Quadrant of Ankeny. Number 41, Notice of Postponed and Rescheduled Public Hearing Regarding City of Reynolds Voluntary Annexation, Including Non-Consenting Owners. Number 42, City of Des Moines Notice of Consultation Meeting on the Amendment to the Metro Center Urban Renewal Plan.
Refer to Public Works and the County Attorney. Budget actions?
None.
We do have appointments.
Excuse me, move the appointment list.
I'd like to request a separate vote on Gail Stevenson.
Um, roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
No.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
We do have a staff meeting tomorrow regarding Sleepy Hollow and Rich Wil, uh, not Rich Willis. That guy back there, Rich Leopold. You don't sell cars, I don't think. Is that right? Is that the only thing on tomorrow? Yeah, okay. All right. I think I need a motion to adjourn.
No, Madam Chair, if I could, I, I'd like to address a couple of the Supervisor McCoy's comments. Just basically on the premise that, you know, there's, in, in these terms that we use to further this whole discussion about, I mean, we talk about cronyism, I, Supervisor McCoy certainly has friends that work in county government, friends that worked on his campaign that work in county government, and for him to allege that there's this depth of cronyism in county government is really hypocritical on his part. But the second piece, I think more importantly, is all this argument about the cloak of darkness and how we do these things. Folks, I talk to my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors every single day. I talk to them all, all the time. I talk to staff, I talk to, I talk to our county administrator, I talk to our assistant county administrator, I reach out to them to find out, okay, what does this item means? What's the agenda here? What are we trying to accomplish with this? And we communicate amongst each other. If Supervisor McCoy chooses not to communicate with his colleagues, that's his choice. If he chooses not to communicate and reach out to staff, that's his choice. But to argue that we don't communicate and we all make these decisions behind closed doors is a blatant lie.
I disagree with that because.
We've heard your opinion already this morning, Steve.
I'm not done talking, don't interrupt me.
We heard your.
Don't interrupt me.
Okay.
Don't interrupt me. Don't speak to me that way. Use your inside voice and try to control yourself.
Continue, continue making friends, continue making friends.
Because I can, I can tell you, with respect to the naming of the Justice Center in Polk County, nobody reached out to me. Now, let me tell you, you know, we pay, we pay professional staff to advise us of, of what should be coming up on these agendas. I'm not getting information. I'm being, I'm being kept in the dark on many, many things. And while I don't expect my colleagues to tell me what they're working on or what they're trying to achieve, I certainly expect a professional staff or county administrator to keep us informed, and I'm not being informed. I did not know about the Justice Center before it was announced publicly at a public unveiling in the community, that I had no idea that was happening until after it occurred. These are the kinds of things that I'm talking about. And so, you know, you can say it's a blatant lie, I can say it's the truth. And, and we can disagree without being disagreeable, Supervisor Hawkinsmith.
Have you reached out to anyone about any of your concerns? Have you reached out to me, Supervisor Conley, Supervisor Van Orte, anyone about your concerns? Or the staff, until a public meeting when you grandstand like you do almost every other Tuesday?
You know.
The answer to that is no. The answer to that is no.
You know, I have interactions every day with, with staff and county employees about the business of the county, just like you do, Supervisor Hawkinsmith. We all won an election, and you're not gonna tell me how to do my job, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna listen to you tell me how to do your job because I think when it comes to hypocrisy, you are the king of hypocrisy and have been for some time.
Okay, that's enough.
Madam Chair, I think we're getting kind of far afield from the agenda here.
Yeah, I agree totally. Let's get a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Roll call.
Van Orte?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes, I would like to adjourn.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Brownell?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.